Let's call this meeting to order.
Colonel Owens?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the part of the meeting where we talk about district goals. So we have three goals. We have student achievement, which is the number one goal. We have financial prudence, which is the goal that supports that, make sure we maximize every teacher dollar, every taxpayer dollar. And then we also have community engagement. And we use those three in every decision we make in here, is based on those decisions and those goals. So with that, we'll move on, we've got a long agenda tonight. District recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Neso, I am going to go to the podium for two of our recognitions this evening.
Okay.
First, we have, it's my pleasure to announce Cole Ventreska as this year's selected Strongsville High School student as best in class. Cole, come up here and join me here. Cole is the 2019, again, best in class Strongsville High School representative. Cole was selected as best in class representative because he graduated ranked number one in the class of 2019 with a GPA of 4.873. During his time at SHS, Cole has earned all As. He has taken rigorous curriculum of honors and AP courses. Throughout his high school career, he took a total of 31 honors or AP courses. That's tremendous. He was actively involved in numerous bands, and I was reading what you sent us. I mean, name a band, name a performance, name anything, Cole participated in it. Just went above and beyond in music throughout his four years. He was a member of the Leadership Academy, Model UN, was a National Merit Program, recognized students. You were an AP scholar with distinction. And during the last four years, he's been recognized for these accomplishments, not only in music, but Model UN, speech contests, and essay writing. Next fall, Cole is undecided on his major, but I believe you are going to go and study at Colgate University. Is that correct? Okay, very good. So please join me in congratulating Cole Ventreska as our best in class of 2019 on his wonderful career at SHS and his outstanding accomplishments. Thank you, Cole.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations, Cole.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, best of luck to you. Next, last month, we recognized some of our outstanding achievement awards as we were recognized at our Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County. And they award our students and our staff, and we had some recognitions. But Ms. Sam Filer could not be here then, so she's here now. We want to make sure that we recognize her for her the Outstanding Peer Achievement Award. So she is a peer at Strongsville High School. And as a senior, Samantha has accrued an impressive amount of volunteer hours and extracurricular activities in her efforts to support students with disabilities. Over the past three years, she has served as a peer role model for students in the Multiple Disability Classroom, as well as the Art Exploration Classroom, which is designed to help support students with special needs. So Samantha has given her time outside of the classroom, also by participating in the Team Miles fundraiser. If you remember, we lost one of our students this year, Miles Cutterer. And so she participated in that fundraiser to support him and his family. And she also assists with school field trips. So Sam, well deserved. Thank you for all you do for all students, and congratulations to you. And next, I'm going to call up Mrs. Danielle Blackman, who is going to recognize Kennedy Griffin.
Thank you. I am honored to be able to be up here to recognize Kennedy as a student athlete. She, the Ohio Middle School State Meet is a meet in which an athlete has to qualify for now. So before, anybody used to be able to just kind of enter into the meet. But now it's required that you have an FAT time, which is called a fully automatic time. And they only take the top 24 athletes for each event. And Kennedy was able to qualify for that for two, really three events, but she participated in two. Kennedy qualified for the 100 meter, long jump, and the four-by-four. But due to conflicts, the other girls' schedules, our four-by-four team was not able to compete. Kennedy was ranked first going into the state meet in the long jump with a jump of 17 feet and a half inch at the men are Invitational this year. And the 100 meter dash, she was ranked second going into the state meet with a time of 12.69. Just when we thought those qualifying times were remarkable, put Kennedy up with competition, and she will bring out her best. At the state meet, Kennedy jumped an impressive 18 feet, one and a quarter inch, and ran a 12.51 in the 100 meter dash. She took first in the long jump and second in the 100 meter dash. But what's most amazing is that she now holds the state record for the long jump. And she surpassed that almost by two feet. Kennedy is one of the most coachable kids that we've ever had as a middle school staff. I talked to some of the other coaches, and they all agreed upon that. Not only does she listen, but she has the ability to immediately put whatever we say into action. Kennedy, I would like to thank you for representing us as a school, a district, and a community, not only as an athlete, but as a student athlete. She also holds a 4.0 and was in my honors algebra class as an eighth grader, also receiving an A in there, too. So I've never had so many coaches from other schools seek me out to say amazing things about you being an athlete, but also admiring your kindness to other athletes on other teams, and words of encouragement as well before starting a meet. I'm excited to see your accomplishments at the high school. And I already know that all the coaches, athletes, and parents can't wait for you to be there. I also received in my mailbox a letter from Senator Patton? No, Senator Dolan. So a nice letter for her here, so I will give that to you.
Oh, that's nice.
And then a certificate for you. So please help me in congratulating Kennedy.
You stay most tight, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, no touts, no questions, no nothing, anybody calls you, you don't answer the phone.
You call Uncle Carl, he'll take care of it.
You call me, I'll pop them down. No problem.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'd be so impressed, congratulations.
You talk to her?
Thank you for all your hard work, too.
Okay.
Kennedy, I just want to congratulate you once again, and to your parents as well. I know it takes a team supporting you, I'm sure, but I can't even imagine the hours and the time and the effort you continuously put in to not only your running and your training, but also in school. And I just know we're going to see you more and more here at these board meetings highlighting your outstanding accomplishments. So congratulations to you.
If I could ask, how far was the long jump at the state meet?
Like my jump or?
Yeah, your jump.
It was 18 miles and a half.
Wow. Wow. Congratulations.
There's some "we" in that "need."
Yeah. She's an amazing athlete.
Congratulations to your dad, too. He's always a big help to us. Every time we need help, he's always there, so, great family, thank you. Alright, with that, not nearly as exciting, the superintendent's report. Although it's coming from Jenny today.
It's the assistant superintendent's report.
No, no, today you are the superintendent.
Oh, okay, alright, well.
So it's going to be a good report.
There was a coup.
Yes, those that we've highlighted, if you want to go, you may, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have other things to do.
Hi, guys.
Thank you, congrats. So with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we've been working on this year. And one of the things I'm most proud of, that I've worked with teachers and staff and students on, is creating our new instructional plan. And so what you have in front of you, and what you see on the screen, is the cover page to our new instructional plan. And this will carry us through the next three years. And so what we've done is we've come up with five core competencies that we would like our students to have by the time they graduate. So many schools around Ohio and around the nation are creating these Portrait of a Graduates or, you know, a profile of a graduate. We decided to call ours the Model Mustang. We do feel that these competencies need to extend not only to when students are in high school, but as they grow with us. So pre-K through 12, our students are going to be exposed to innovative practices. They will learn how to be resilient, collaborative, global, and empowered. And the idea behind this, our last instructional plan, if you remember, was focused more on task-oriented things. So we had to get some things in order and build that foundation. So our curriculum maps, for example, we had to make sure those were up to date. We had to get common assessments in place. So some of those things that are task-oriented are now completed. So we're really proud of that work. But we want to move forward, and we want to make sure that when our kids graduate from us, they have the skills necessary to be competitive in whatever they would like to do, whether college, career, or military, whatever they choose, they have those skills. Because we're living in a world today where information is at the tip of our fingers, but how we apply that information, how we use that information, how we work together with people to get the best outcome we want, is crucial. And so building these competencies within our kids is very important to us. So, for example, I'll give you a quick example, resilient. So part of our work in the next few years is really going to be, what are we already doing that covers these things? Because I know we're doing a lot of great work already. And how can we continue to build on it to make sure that it's more systematic? And that every student, by the time they graduate, have these things. So resilient, I was running out to lunch today, and I ran into a couple of our teachers. And one of them is doing summer school right now. And she said, you know, I wanted the kids to take the test. They are allowed to take it two times, so that they pass it. And they said, no, no, we want to just do it the time, you know, at the next date. We'll just do it then. And she said, well, no, do it first, and if you pass, you're done. But if you don't, we can recognize what areas that you need to work on. You can go study to ensure that you pass the next time. So that's what it's about. It's about trying to give kids more opportunities and get that feedback ahead of time so that it's just not one assessment, and maybe they're done. But build that skill to learn that, no, try it first, see where you're lacking, and then you're going to try again, and you're going to keep going. So that's an example, and we're going to continue to build those examples. Because I know, again, like I said, we do a lot of great things already, and we just need to build on it. So this is the front page, these are the competencies we came up with. And then what they mean are the bullet points below them. And we're going to work, the buildings will select probably two in the next couple months as school starts, and then decide what action steps they want to take this first year, and we'll get it going. So we're pretty excited about it.
Looks good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, and then the next thing I just wanted to highlight is, you know, I get this question a lot. What do you do all summer? You work all summer, what do you do? The kids aren't there, the teachers aren't there. Well, we're pretty busy, let me tell you. And so I wanted just to update you on enrollment and staffing. And so this has been a huge part of our time, is getting a lot of teachers on board, new staff on board. We're really excited about some of our hires. And so with that, I wanted to update you, we've had to add additional sections due to increased enrollment in certain buildings. So as you can see there, Chapman, we've added a first grade section. Kinsner, two full-day kindergartens, Maraski, a first grade, and Sarar, a full-day kindergarten. And so what I've done at the bottom, just to show you, is I compared last year. Now, last year's numbers are August, when we started school, so keep that in mind. And 1920 is currently where we are at the end of June. So over the course of the summer, we'll get more kids that will enroll, and this may change. So just real quick, pre-kindergarten, we started last year, actually, that number, overall, we ended with 186. But in this August, I believe we were at 149. And so pre-K is one of those times where we get students all the way throughout the year. So we ended, actually, with 186. You can see the additional section there at Chapman, we added the first grade plus some more students there, so that's increasing. Kinsner, we've gone from 552 to 601 right now, and that's why we added those two full-day kindergarten sections. Maraski, the additional first grade, so that's increased. Sarar actually decreased, and we did add a full-day kindergarten, but I did take away two sections. So a second grade section and a fourth grade section were decreased there. And then Whitney, we're a little low right now, but we typically get an influx of students at Whitney as we start the year. Middle school, again, we get an influx of sixth grade and seventh grade students as we start the year. And then the high schools is pretty much the same. So we've, you know, with our retirements and some resignations, we are, I think we've hired at least 10 to 12 new teachers already. I know we've hired a speech pathologist, you'll see in my section, they're all outlined there. So we've been busy and getting ready for next year.
Excellent. And so the predictions that we've heard so many times, and we see the dire predictions of just continued declining enrollment, really isn't kind of holding true. Because by the time these, by the time these all get filled up, we'll be significantly over last year, it looks like, in our enrollment. And, you know, as you can see, all the young kids in the neighborhoods around, I mean, I think we're going to be, you know, it'll be good.
It's a good thing.
Jenny, how many sections of half-day kindergarten do we have left?
We have, at Maraski and Kinsner, we have two half-day sections at each one of those buildings, an AM and a PM. And the other three buildings have one section, either AM or PM. Yep, and those actually are good numbers. I know last year at this time, they were a little lower, but they're already at healthy numbers.
Okay.
The one thing I just wanted to mention, Jane, you would remember this, is the DeJonge Study. And the DeJonge Study was a study done 10 years ago. And that study-
I think we all remember it.
It was longer than that.
Yeah, that study depicted the decrease as our population got older, and kids moved away, and, you know, didn't-
Grew up.
Yeah, they grew up. But that study always had an underlying item that stated that our enrollment would dip at one point and then start to increase, and start to increase. And I think one of the main components of that is we passed our levy, we have an amazing middle school, we renovated the high school. Steve's doing a great job of, you know, covering our parking lots, keeping those areas secure for the next 20-plus years. And because of that momentum, I think people are moving into this town, buying a house, renovating the houses, and doing great things with those homes. So this is, Jane, if you remember, this is the uptick that we always said that we were going to start getting. And I really believe that we're going to start seeing classes of 400 to 500, you know, as we develop our town and our culture.
What those studies didn't have was them, was, I mean, those were based on birth rates and death rates, and just all kinds of different things like that, that didn't really take into account what the good things we were doing, the draw, right? All the improvements, the safety features that we have built in, the incredible teachers that we have. Mr. Green's in the back room, he's one of our, he's one of our stars back there. And, you know, so I don't think it takes into account those things. And that's really what's, that's what's driving these numbers, is Strongsville and the product that we deliver.
Jenny, we still have capacity. It's not like these buildings are bulging like they used to be. Because we've taken the sixth grade out of the elementary schools. So if people are comparing on the historical enrollment data, you have to take that into consideration. That's a whole grade level that's out of these buildings. So we're still not up to where we were, you know, 10 years ago. But it's good that we've plateaued, and we are thriving. Yep, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We have no public comment. And we go on to approval of minutes, item eight. We have the April 18th and May 2nd meetings, regular meetings for approval. Have a motion?
Shall move.
Thank you, Duke, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion, we've all read them. George, take roll.
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Treasurer's report?
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have several items for your consideration tonight. Quite a few of them deal with annual fiscal year close of 2019 and open of fiscal year 2020. Just a reminder to the public, our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. So we're at the end of our current fiscal year and getting ready to close the books on 2019 and open the books on 2020 next week. So a lot of the items you see here are for year end and year open. Item A, financial report for month ending May 31st, 2019, is going to be found in Exhibit A. B, approval of new funds for fiscal year 2020, can be found in Exhibit B. These are creating funds mainly for federal grants for the fiscal year of 2020, creating cost center for those, and also the upcoming freshman class at the high school, and creating a student council fund for Sarar, which was the only elementary school that didn't have one. Item C, transfer of funds and advances to other funds, which can be found in Exhibit C. Item D, student activity accounts. Student activity programs, uniform school supplies, public school support, internal rotary funds, and local grant proposed for fiscal year 2020, which can be found in Exhibit D. E is the final fiscal year 19, a permanent appropriation measure for the fiscal year, which can be found in Exhibit E. F is the fiscal year 2020 temporary appropriations, which can be found in Exhibit F. It's temporary, we at least need to have a temporary budget approved by June 30th to open the fiscal year. Then by law, we have until September 30th to approve an annual appropriation, which I typically present to the board and the public in September for your consideration. With temporary, for the general fund, it's tied to the five-year forecast. I presented in May, 50% for salaries and benefits and 100% for non-personnel items, makes up the amount. G is invoice order approval, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that in accordance with the ORC after the fact invoices, the board approves the following invoice payment, and treasurer be authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. H, which requires a separate vote, is food service management company for Chartwell's, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the contract between Strongsville City Schools and Compass USA, by and through its Chartwell's Division for the Management of the School District's Food Service Program renewed effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Can I have a motion?
Shall move.
Thank you, George, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item I, which also requires a separate vote, it's for the Great Lakes Regional Council of Governments Healthcare Benefits Program Agreement, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the agreement between Strongsville City Schools and Great Lakes Regional Council of Governments for healthcare benefits approved effective July 1st through June 30th, 2020.
Can I have a motion?
Shall move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion?
George, can you highlight how much we expect to save?
Yeah, so, just to highlight the program, so we're joining a health consortium with four other schools, Olmsted Falls, Avon Local, Fairview Park, which currently are in the consortium. Brea just was approved a couple weeks ago to join, and now including us will make up the consortium. And the consortium is strictly for administrative stop-loss and prescription drug rebates. So basically administrative costs of healthcare insurance. Our healthcare, we're self-insured, as long as those, as well as those other districts. So each district is going to be written individually. We're grouping together just for the administrative costs, which we could receive, we could see a cost benefit of having 2,000 lives on a program versus 500. So the cost savings that we would realize would be about $500,000 for this upcoming school year. $200,000 for the prescription drug, and 300 for also switching our plan year for an additional 18 months, from January to July.
That's one of the things that we ran through the finance committee, and it, you know, we tested it, and there doesn't seem to be any downside to doing it. It's all upside, and it keeps our pool of employees consistent and solid so we're not, like, influenced by other districts' loss experience. So it's a good win, and it's a great, great find. So thank you very much for coming to-
And one of the things I find attractive to it compared to other consortiums is where we could, our reserve is kept separate, we're viewed as a separate entity. So for whatever reason, if it doesn't work out, and if we want to pull back, we pull back and we're able to keep our reserve, that we have less our claims run-throughs for that period of time.
Excellent. It's nice to come out of the gate after getting our taxpayers' vote of confidence in the levy, and then to come up with a $500,000 item. It's just outstanding, so, thank you.
George?
Yes.
One component of Exhibit J, page two and page three of 12.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grozan, which exhibit?
Yeah, it's on page, it's Exhibit J, one, two, and three.
Why are we on J?
Oh, we're not there. That's, that's under-
Commercial insurance proposal?
Yeah, that's under the business services report.
Okay, okay, because-
Is it in the wrong place?
At one point, we will have to have a discussion regarding, because we have more vacant land than just this, what's stated on this.
Okay.
So, and that's an important part of, when you're doing commercial insurance for liability purposes, you may just want to put liability on certain empty sections of property that we have. And Carl's very aware of what those properties are. But we just may want to put some basic liability on those pieces of property.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's have a vote on-
My apologies.
That's okay. Thank you, good catch, excellent. Let's, let's take, do we want to take a vote on the healthcare? Is everybody comments, Jane, or? Duke, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes. And with that, that concludes my report.
Alright, back to the superintendent's report, our super superintendent.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up our athletic director, Mr. Denny Ziegler, for a report on how our students and athletes and coaches did during the spring.
Thank you very much. I always appreciate the opportunity to share the success that our student athletes have had. Spring was, by far, in my short time here, the most successful season. We broke well over double digits in state records across the board in all sports. Let's see, start with girls' track. Amelia Lesniak was a state champ, second time in her four years here. She also was the indoor state champ coming out of the winter season. So she was state champ twice this year. Had a height of 5'9". She jumped 5 feet 9 inches in the high jump, that was her best jump of the year. And also was the top time at state. Erin Severs placed third in state at pole vault. And she was also a member of the 4x1 state qualifying team, which was Carson Cobb, Larissa Schwab, Erin Severs, and then Shelby Saleh. And they placed ninth at state. On the boys' side, what turned into be a very promising year for our boys ended kind of tragically. With a fully healthy roster, our boys would have competed for state title in boys' track this year. So Joe Gillette was a qualifier in the 100 meter dash, 200 meter dash, the 4x1 relay, the 4x4 relay. And he was only one of six student athletes in D1 to qualify for four different events at track. His season eventually ended- His season eventually ended, um, in the four-by-one hundred meter relay, where he pulled his hamstring and he was not able to participate in his two best events, which would have, which he probably would have won state titles in. So a team that, you know, could have competed for a state championship at, at best, probably finished second. Ended up, I think they finished sixteenth overall. So Joe set school record in the, um, let's see, in the hundred meter dash with a time of ten point seven five, which was good enough for a fifth place finish at state. He broke the school record in the two hundred meter dash with a time of twenty-one point six one. Broke the school record in the long jump at twenty-two feet, seven point two five inches, which he didn't even compete in that at the regional, uh, level. And then on the four-by-one team, um, uh, they broke the school record as well. Kennedy Griffin, who we already met, um, her brother was just as talented. And just a little side note, her jump at the state meet for the middle school probably would have placed her in the state meet at the high school level. So that's just how good of a jump that was for her. So Taylor Griffin qualified in the four-by-one hundred meter relay. Andrew Askey qualified in the high jump and had a season best of six feet, five inches in his jump at the state meet. Riley Anderson qualified in the two hundred meter dash, the four-by-one hundred meter relay, and the four-by-four relay. Jack Maschuski, um, qualified in the four-by-eight, the four-by-one, the eight hundred meter, and the four-by-eight. And Jack is, Jack is one of six, so Joe is one, and Jack is one of six D-one athletes that qualified for four different, um, state events. Tyler Howsem qualified in the four-by-eight. Matt, Matt, uh, let's see, Matt Malloy qualified in the four-by-eight. Jack Mott qualified in the eight hundred meter run, the four-by-eight, the four-by-four, and in the eight hundred meter run, Jack ran his best time at the regional. And he finished fourteenth overall at state. Let's see, um, Matt Cornelius, who was alternate for Joe in the four-by-four relay at the state meet, ran his best time at the state meet of fifty point six. So, you know, great opportunity for him to step in and to compete and have his best time. So that was it for track. Going on the boys' tennis, they had a third place finish in the conference and senior Matt Kennedy was all greater con- was all Greater Cleveland Conference. Softball finished eleven and fourteen, they were, they were in districts for the first time in nine years. They ran against Brexville, who they lost earlier in the year, three to two, and they ended up, uh, losing. And then Brexville ended up making it to the regional finals and they lost to eventually state runner-up, Alaria. Kirsten Epley was voted first team All-State. She broke school records in home runs with ten, um, batting average, doubles, runs scored, slugging percentage, as well as RBIs. And she is coming back, she's only a junior. So, um, Akron's getting a pretty good one, um, but we get her for one more year. She was also voted MVP of Cuyahoga County. And Ashley Kuhn was all-district and first team All-GCC as well. And, um, so, pretty talented softball team and I, we only lose four. So we get a lot of those girls, um, back, um, next year. The boys and girls' lacrosse team both hosted their first ever state playoff games. They both won. The boys finished, I believe, with a record of thirteen and five. Ran into a tough, tough, tough Dublin Kaufman team who hadn't lost all year, they were eventually state champs. And seven of the Dublin Kaufman starters are all going on to play D-one lacrosse. So it was a tough matchup for us. As far as the baseball season goes, um, they started the season beating the number one, or, excuse me, the number two team in the state, Cincinnati Moller. Uh, and then they went on a little bit of a rough streak, they lost ten straight. They went on to IMG and played some tough competition. Four of the schools they played there were in the state finals at, in their state. So just shows the tough competition that we played. But after those first eleven games, the team ended up going eleven and six to finish the season strong. They were actually one or two games away from competing for the GCC title. So, um, and just some highlights for them, um, All-Ohio is Jack Frank, um, First Team All-State is Jack Frank. The All-Ohio game is Jack Frank played in, he was one of eighty players in the state selected by coaches. Then as far as the Northeast Baseball Coaches Association District, um, uh, Jack Frank received first team. Honorable mention went to Ryan Hartman as well as Giovanni Lombardo. The Northeast Ohio Baseball Coaches Association All-Star Game, participants consisted of Ryan Hartman as well as Giovanni Lombardi. The Greater Cleveland Baseball Coaches Association game included Matt Bush as well as Bob James. And then the greater, the GCC, um, Conference Awards First Team All-Conference, we had four. And Jack Frank, Ryan Hartman, Justin Kreller, as well as Giovanni Lombardo. And then we had two on the honorable mention, which included Matt Bush and Bob James. So as you can see, very, very successful spring sports season. As far as the, um, the numbers go, we were actually up only three athletes. So as far as the rate goes, we are pretty consistent, you know, with our participation. And going based on what we heard with the enrollment projections, I am seeing that more with a, a lot of athletes coming back to our district. So whether that be athletes that maybe went to a private pro-geo school, are now wanting to transfer back. I know alone going in the fall, we'll have a, at least five or six transfers coming to us. You know, and they're not only from the state, we're getting some families moving in from Georgia, um, you know, and, and some different states. So I really look for our numbers to go up in the sports, um, as well as, you know, a lot more multi-sport student athletes. You know, I think as we get the word out that that's what we're going to strive for, we're now getting a lot more student athletes coming out for some different sports that we see right now during our summer months with our open gyms. There's a lot of athletes that are partaking in a lot of those open gyms that didn't do that sport, uh, last year. So I, I look for great things to come and, you know, the continued success with our fall programs coming up.
Excellent. Continue to, I mean, do whatever you can or whatever ways you can think of to encourage multi-sport athletes. So if there's some encouragement or something we can do to help them, and that seems to be the key to staying healthy, to, you know, better competition, to everything, just, you know, this, you know, when you focus on just one act, one sport, one activity, you can get repetitive use injuries and all kinds of stuff. And plus you're better athletes or you're multi, multi-sport athletes anyways, in my opinion and everything I've read, so.
Sure.
If you've got any ideas on that, work on them, bring them to us, and we'd be happy to, to help you work through that.
Yeah, I think one thing that we are going to be starting this fall is we're going to be recognized in three-sport athletes. You know, and, and then be part of a three-sport athlete club, uh, as well as we are going to be starting up a Letterman's Club, which I want to recognize any student athlete that has earned at least six, six varsity letters, which means they have to be multi-sport student athletes to be part of that. And my goal is, as soon as other students start to see this club and how minimal it is that more students are gonna, are gonna want to be part of it because it's going to be something special that not a lot of people, you know, are going to be able to partake in.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dunny, for, for being here, and I, I just personally want to thank you for all the juggling of schedules and everything with the weather in the spring and everything. I know that's not easy and congratulations to all of our, our student athletes. It's just amazing to hear these accomplishments and, you know, from my mom who has a volleyball player and baseball players, I know the time it takes and the dedication it takes on the athletes, but also the parents to get them to where they need to be and continually to, to help them through those challenges and keeping on going when, uh, when they fail and, and supporting them when they succeed. So again, it's difficult and challenging and I just commend all of our, our athletes and their successes this season, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for being, most thanks.
All right, continuing on with, uh, timely information, um, under A-two, we have our contingency calendar. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that in compliance with Ohio Revised Code, Section three-three-one-seven-zero-one-B, the following dates be approved as contingency in the event days must be made up as a result of weather or other calamity. And those are listed as June first to twenty twenty, June second, June third, June fourth, and June fifth, all of twenty twenty. Under A-three, the Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education authorizes the Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year as stated in the exhibit. I do believe so, as I just read it. So we'll need to change that to nineteen twenty. Under A-four, Administrative Handbook, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Administrative Handbook be adopted for the period of August first, two thousand nineteen through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And finally, under A-five, the Leadership Handbook, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Leadership Handbook be adopted for the period of August first, two thousand nineteen through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And with that, I would like to bring up Mr. Steven Brechner for our Business Service Report.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of items here for Business Services tonight. Uh, item number one is a gift. The Men's Warehouse donated two hundred and twenty-five dollars to Strongsville High School through the Cash For Your School National Donation Program. The second item is, uh, Direct Insurance, uh, from the General Fund, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to purchase property, inland marine, boiler, machinery, crime, automobile, general liability, and umbrella insurance from Liberty Mutual Insurance Company. Their agent is Todd Associates, as endorsed by the Ohio Schools Council at a one-year contract price of two hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the period of July first, two thousand nineteen through July first of two thousand twenty, which includes all school groups. This is an increase in cost, last year's cost was two hundred eighty-five thousand dollar, I'm sorry, two hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And then be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education recognizes the following groups as authorized school groups, and they're in the Strongsville City Schools Insurance Policy, and those groups are listed.
So Steve, I will mention it to you now.
Okay.
That we have additional properties throughout this town. We have a piece of property that's two to three acres across the street from where the old Albion School was. We have a piece of property in Mr. Miko's neighborhood. We have a number of different pieces of property throughout Strongsville. So my recommendation to you is to get ahold of Brian Junderberg. He has an Excel list of the pieces of property that are, that are not, that are vacant. And just place liability insurance on those pieces of property.
Okay.
In case somebody falls, cracks their head, hurts themselves, whatever it might be. But I think it would be incredibly important that we place those pieces of property on this list.
Okay.
So that we don't have someone coming to us at one point or another and saying, "Well, we're on your piece of property" and, you know, "A thorn went to my finger," whatever it might be.
Okay.
Okay? So thank you very much.
So sticking with this item, um, I'd like to make a motion that we re- we remove the, um, this item from the consent calendar and have a separate vote. I need to abstain because, and that's why, one of the things I don't, I don't know as much about this is, I don't look, my, my sister works for Todd and Associates, so I never get involved in this discussion. So I always abstain from it. I'd like to make a motion that we have, that we, um, remove it from the consent calendar.
We don't need a motion, do we?
No.
The motion is supposed to request.
Okay, I'd just like to request it then, and then have a separate vote on it then right now. Is that done? Can I have a motion?
Well, we just would do it at the end of the meeting. When we...
That didn't sound good, Richard.
It didn't. When we get to the consent, excuse me, when we get to the consent calendar, that's when you request to remove it, and then we'll do the separate vote at that time.
Okay, I was thought since we're going through it now, it might be clear to vote on it now. Go, good with either way. Okay.
All right.
Next item.
Uh, continuing on, item three, uh, People Transportation Agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to enter into an agreement with Suburban Transportation Company for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year for the transportation of special education and handicapped students within Strongsville City School District and in district schools, I'm sorry, to in district schools and also, uh, classes at schools out of the district. Transportation to in district schools will also be provided for students becoming homeless while attending Strongsville City Schools and now residing outside the district. This agreement is put in place due to the impracticality of transporting these students by Strongsville City Schools Bus Transportation. Uh, item four, which, uh, needs a vote, is the purchase of two F-three-fifty Ford trucks. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. That the Board of Education approves the purchase of two, two thousand nineteen, four F-three-fifty trucks from Harrison Ford Wellington at the total quoted price of seventy-eight thousand dollars, funding to be from the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, before we have our, our vote, one thing, we did look into the two thousand nineteenth's and because we're in a consortium, those are the vehicles that were included in the consortium pricing, so we were actually able to purchase nineteenth's at a cheaper price than eighteenth's. So we, we did look and we tried, we, uh, we looked at it to see if there was a way to save by, by getting, you know, new, closeout models. And actually, the pricing that we were able to get through the consortium was better, so.
Correct, and these trucks are actually built for our specifications. So the thirty-nine thousand apiece also includes a six thousand dollar toolbox bed, where if we were to buy something that was already made and was a closeout price, we'd have to remove that bed and pay to have another bed installed on it. So, um, that's also included with the price.
And some of our Fords, they're, uh, they're, they're coming to the end of life.
Uh, the ones that are being replaced right now are two thousand fives. And, um, you could look at it and say, oh, yeah, so we do have sixty thousand to seventy thousand miles on them. But if you look at the undercarriage, you're looking at more like a hundred and ninety thousand miles on them, just because of the salt, because of the exposure, snow plowing. One, one thing we're also going to be able to do with these trucks that we're getting, uh, that we're going to be putting on auction, see what we can get for them, they do have newer beds on them. So we're going to in-house with our mechanics, take those newer beds off, swap them with some rusted, some beds that are rusting out, and then put those out for auction. So we'll be able to then, uh, have those newer beds on some of our trucks, um, extend the life of those beds as well, and not get rid of great assets that we already have in the district.
Well, that's good, I'm glad we're getting rid of the old ones, because all you end up doing is, they're spares and you just keep throwing money at them and they're just money pits, so the best thing is just get them out of here.
How many of these trucks do we have?
Eight total.
Eight, okay.
And this is all part of the plan that I presented last year. Next year, if we keep according to the plan, as long as, you know, we keep being as fiscally responsible as the departments that, that I'm running as we have been, uh, we'll come to one replacement. And one thing we've also done is partner with a, a local car wash. I don't know if I can mention car washes or not, you know, trademark or anything, but, uh...
Sure you can, Brian won't mind.
Uh, Sergeant Clean is, is, we've entered into a, a, a deal with them where we do get a monthly rate at a discounted rate, and our trucks just go through. So that way, when it is the, the middle of the, of the winter season and that salt's starting to eat away at the bottom, we do get that chassis bath, um, to help prolong it, and that's something we started last year. So we are taking care of the assets that the taxpayers are giving us to the best of our ability to extend the life of those.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions or discussion?
No.
Take, take, take a roll?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, issue number five, uh, I'll, I'll read it, and I do have a little presentation that goes with this one, so if you'll indulge me, I will make your motions and everything, but I do have a, a, a little, uh, presentation I would like to do with this one. So I'm gonna turn on the projector and I'll read the motion here, uh, or I'll read the, the item. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of one excavator from ABC Equipment Rental and Sales at the total quoted price of fifty-two thousand, three hundred, ten dollars and six cents, funding to be from the General Fund.
Hey Steve, while that's warming up, didn't we have a plan at one time to put some kind of a, uh, a washing and undercarriage washer over in our transportation area that we were going to get donated?
I'm, I'm sure we may talk about that at a retreat-type setting, uh, very soon. That, that is something I'm looking at investigating. Uh, we do have some cities around us and some school districts around us that do have bus washes that they've built. Kind, that... I'm kind, part of my goal for next year is contact those places, see what hurdles they had to overcome, so we can jump them easier, but that is something I look to investigate of creating our own bus wash slash trush wash, truck wash area.
We do have a pump, right?
Pardon me?
Didn't we get the pump donated?
No.
Not yet?
The other issue is the wastewater with it, that's the thing, is the recycling.
What do you do?
Yeah.
They won't let me disturb the geese outside of support services and the runoff there, so. Yes, that is being investigated next year to see what it will cost the district to do that.
Okay.
I didn't know if we need, if you need to make the motion for...
Now, we can take a chance. We just want to discuss it.
So I wanted to talk to you and present to you about this, because I know this is an expensive piece of equipment, and it is part of the overall plan to replace equipment, but for those out there that see that price tag and say, "Do we really need this? We're a school district, we're not a construction company," I want to show you how we are using this, and this will be applicable use and a good use of our resources here. So I just entitled this Project Savings, and I could put my name on this, but it would be disingenuous. So all this work was completed by our maintenance, and they're all listed there. We even pull out, one of our retired, if, one of our retired maintenance men, we dust, we get them off the shelf, dust them off whenever we have somebody go out for an extended vacation or some other need that come in, because they're the ones that do the work. I may come up with the plans, but when literally the asphalt hits the ground or the dirt has to be moved, these are the guys that are doing all that hard work and sweating outside. So I want to give credit where credit's due. Just to highlight a few of the items that we've been able to do, and this is just in the past two years. The first one is Kinsner Elementary. We put in, I say "we," and I apologize, "they," put in a retaining wall. You may not remember it, because it's not on the front of the building, but at one point, this was a brick retaining wall that was falling over. It was unsafe for trucks going in and out. Of course, kids see a wall, they want to climb it. It was just due to some of the construction. It was not holding up as well as it should. We did get it quoted out at $17,500 to get that replaced. We were able to do that in-house, and that means going down four feet, digging that out with an excavator that we rented, getting the forms, filling the forms, making sure everything was good, and we were able to do that for $7,500. Kinsner Elementary walkways, this was part of the asphalt project. We actually quoted just the one on your right there, this is the walkway coming from the development behind, coming into Kinsner. We just quoted one. One was quoted at $17,000 to complete. We actually did two, and two were done for $6,000, so just for the price of concrete. Whitney Elementary, we had problems with the entrance. There were railroad ties, it was a flood zone in the front there. Guys with excavating equipment dug everything up, redid the drainage there, removed all the ties, and then put in concrete. All that was done with an excavator that we rented. Also, you can see on the left there, the sidewalk, find out, we have a, the sidewalk actually ended right in here, this line here. We were able to extend that to make it safer for students, and that just isn't the only area. We extended that all the way around. Total of 26 yards of concrete was used. The estimate that we got to do that was $20,000 across all of the construction needed. We were able to do that in-house for $9,000. Maraski Elementary sidewalk from Royalton Road, and if you know that sidewalk, it was barely in existence. We were able to resurrect that, dig everything out with a rented excavator and go from Lund all the way down to the school or the school playground. It was over 300 feet of sidewalk that we were able to put in. Quote on that was about $30,000. We were able to do it for 10, in-house. So projects that didn't even make this list, this isn't exhaustive by any means. Chapman Concrete Replacement, Drainage at Maraski, Drainage at Surar, Reinforcement of Walkway at SHS, that was the one where it's over a culvert pipe, it was starting to fall away. Our guys with the rented excavator went in, reinforced all of that. It'll be here long after all of us are smiling in retirement. So Lighting Walkway at SHS, Lighting of the Junior Lot at SHS, Announcer Shed at Strongsville Middle School, Discus and Shop Put renovation at SHS. Again, this is just a fraction of what we've been able to do with rented excavators. Total savings on the ones that I highlighted, those four, if we were to do the quoted cost, it would have cost the district $84,500, even with renting an excavator, and that's included in these quotes. We did it in-house for $31,500 for a total cost savings of $57,000, and just to remind the board and those that are paying attention, those four projects alone, the others are not included in this list, would more than cover the cost of a new excavator. So the reason why this is on there is because we are using this. People could say, "Well, why don't you just keep renting it?" Well, it's $2,400 a month to rent an excavator that we're going to be purchasing for $53,000. We use it six months out of the year, and that's conservative, because any time that there's weather that's good, I'm telling Keith, "We gotta get this stuff done," and the guys get it done. If we were to rent an excavator for six months at $2,400, doing that quick math, you would reach over $53,000 by three and a half years. The piece of equipment that we're replacing right now, which is a backhoe, if we were to replace outright is $165,000 is what I was able to quote out, we're able to use the mini excavator for what we're using the backhoe for. That's been in existence here in the district and used in the district for 30 years. It's a 1990 that we're replacing right now. Now, I will not sit here, because there is a camera in my face, and this is all recorded. I will not sit here and guarantee you 30 years out of this mini excavator, but I can guarantee you 20. And I know that our guys and our mechanics, as great as they are as well, will keep that thing running and working. And if they can do that with a 1990-used backhoe, I know that we could get our use out of this mini excavator.
Excellent. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Can I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Nice work. I mean, it's clearly, I mean, it pays for itself. You guys obviously know how to use it, and it's got a nice return to the district, and we appreciate the effort of your guys. Tell them we're grateful. Taxpayers are grateful for everything they do, and keeping their kids safe, saving us money. It's good. Anybody else want to?
I was at Kinsner, I was at Maraski. You wouldn't believe how dedicated they are to student safety, to bringing costs down. I mean, one, the one thing you didn't put on there was the concrete pad underneath a dumpster. I mean, God, what was that quoted for? I mean, they'd put a six-inch pad underneath a dumpster, so, because the asphalt would have just sunk down. I mean, these guys are amazing, and when I mean amazing, they are truly, truly hardworking individuals that just, they think about the district, they think about the children, and they just go. They just go.
And not to press my luck, but I do have a couple slides of what's just been done in the past few weeks. We know that the Lund Road construct, the Lund Road issue with the preschool, there was congestion, so the decision was made to put a walkway in from the parking lot of the high school to the preschool, reroute parents into the student lot, so that way it would alleviate the traffic off of Lund. This was completed yesterday, in-house. I would, I would show you what it was quoted for, but to be honest and fully transparent with the board, I don't go out to quote this stuff anymore. I talked to Keith and say, "Here's what we need to do, and let's get it done," and we get it done. It's just not worth the time anymore, because we're getting such a great savings by doing it all in-house. The second thing that's been done in the past two weeks, Kinsner Entrance has been redone. We were, there was a lot of concrete in for the front of Kinsner. At one point, there was a lot of trees in there, but the trees and concrete don't necessarily get along when they're put in that close a proximity, so the roots were actually causing the concrete to heave, and it started to look bad. So what we decided to do was take out some of those concrete pavers and put in grass in those areas, and still plant trees, but have a larger room for that root system to grow. And you can see how that looks now. Grass is already starting to come in in front of the building due to all the rain. I was talking to Matt Schoenhut, who's not here right now, but we're gonna put some fertilizer down too, to make sure that that growth keeps happening. But that, again, did not quote that out, because I knew it was going to be so expensive that we just did it in-house. Again, having to rent an excavator, because we didn't have one, but that's what I'm looking to rent immediately with this purchase.
Steve, how big is it? How big is the excavator?
As far as engine size?
How big is it?
Do you have the picture of it?
Um, I do, but not on this computer right here.
You sent us one, I think.
I did send it. It's...
Kabuto?
I would say... Oh, man, you put me on the spot, I'm sorry.
We just need to bring it to touch a truck. That's all I was gonna suggest.
You put me on the spot. Yeah, I can definitely make sure it's all looking nice and we get it out there for everyone.
And the great thing is, is you've got a staff at the bus garage who can keep it, maintain it, take care of it, and everything else.
Correct.
Excellent. All right, let's vote. George?
Yep.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes, but I also want to say thank you for highlighting how much we self-perform a lot of these projects that maybe the community wasn't aware. So thank you, yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is the purchase of a box truck, 2017 Ford E3DX 350 box truck. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of one 2017 Ford box truck from Enterprise Car Sales at the total quoted price of $28,227.05, funding to be from the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? This is to replace the damaged one, correct?
Correct.
And the net of the insurance, between the insurance proceeds from the previous one to this one, was $1,200 or something?
Correct.
Small, okay. All right. Any discussion? Let's vote. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven is transportation for non-public students. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that school bus transportation for listed students be declared impractical. The time and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, administration, and additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays the parents of students attending these schools. The reimbursement will be based on the amount allotted by the state, and the students and schools are listed there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Full outing, huh?
Thank you.
Curriculum?
Okay. And before I go on to curriculum, Steve, just thank you so much for your leadership and of the Maintenance Department and all of them. If anybody wants to follow their projects, I just love it, they put their projects on Twitter. So it's Strongsville City Schools Maintenance Department, and they're putting pictures of the projects as they go, and it's just such a positive thing. That's never happened before in my, in my knowledge, so I think it's pretty cool that they do that. So thank you to you and to them. Moving on to curriculum, item C1, there is a correction. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following corrections be made. Correction to Agenda, May 16th, 2019. Under C, Curriculum Number Five, Strongsville High School Athletic Handbook, there is an updated version. Under C2, Ronald Stewart and Associates, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into a project agreement with Ronald Stewart and Associates LLC for consultive, consultive, can't say the word, consultative services for entitlement grant funds for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and that can be found in Exhibit N.
Jenny, just one correction on that.
Yes.
I've swapped out all purchase services from the federal grants to the General Fund and added salary, swapped them off for salaries, so just the funding sources, General Fund.
Is General Fund instead of Title I Fund?
So you're saying Agenda Item 10C2, that Title 572 Title I Fund should be something, should be general?
General Fund. I swapped out purchase services for salaries, to ensure they're fully utilized.
Even for his project agreement, that is on your General Fund as well? Okay.
Hold on. So this is Item 10C2, we'll swatch out Title I Fund for General Fund. Okay.
Okay. Under C3, Learning A to Z Licenses, this is for a lot of our programs that we have in the, in the elementary, and that can be found in Exhibit O. Under C4, French and Spanish Textbook Adoption. Again, we are adopting new textbooks for French and Spanish, and that can be found in Exhibit P. Under C5, Advanced Placement U.S. Government and Politics Textbook Adoption, can be found in Exhibit Q. Under C6, Advanced Placement Physics 1 Algebra-Based Textbook Adoption, and that can be found under Exhibit R. Continuing with curriculum, under number seven, Adimen Solutions. This is our curriculum used, utilized by the Strongsville Academy for the 1920 school year. Under C8, our Ohio Online Learning Platform. Under C9, Textbooks for College Credit Plus. Under C10, we have our 2019-20 Student Fees. Under C11, Overnight Trip for Strongsville High School Boys Golf Team. Under C12, An Out-of-State Trip for High School Girls Soccer Team. Under C13, Deaf Interpretive Services Field Experience. And that concludes the report under Curriculum.
Jenny, for the item 10, the student fees?
Yes.
There was never an addendum or a listing that we saw. Could that be sent out to the board, please?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll make a note of that. Under Section D for Student Services, under D1, we have Solutions Behavioral Consulting that can be found in Exhibit S. Under D2, Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, Exhibit T. D3, Kids Link School, Exhibit U. And finally, D4, Steps Academy, and that can be found in Exhibit V.
Nice job.
Continuing, under my section, under Human Resources, E1, we have the resignation of an administrative staff. Mr. Steve Dietrich, our principal for the middle school, has elected to resign. We wish him all the best. He's done great things for our district, and he will be greatly missed. So thank you, Steve, and for your service here for the Strongsville students and staff. Continuing Resignations of Certificated Staff, resignation of certificated supplemental, resignation for non-certificated supplemental. Under E2, Retirements for Certificated Staff. We have one correction, Mr. Neso. For Terry Harbart, the effective date says June 30th, 2019. It should say May 31st, 2019. That was technically the last day of work for our teachers, so we'll make it consistent with everybody else.
So 10E2, this may be a record?
I know.
Of corrections to the consent calendar.
Keep track of all of these.
Under Terri's.
And then if you note, I'm getting questions on some of these retirements, some are effective 2020, so they're, they put that in already, but they won't go into effect until after this year.
Okay.
Under E3, we have the appointment of an administrative staff. We have Mr. Michael Griffin, who will be our elementary principal for Maraski Elementary. Mike is here with us this evening, and I just wanted to share a few things about Mike. He, for the last three years, he's served as the associate principal at Lee Eaton Elementary in Nordonia, and prior to that, he was a high school intervention specialist in Nordonia. He comes to us, he, you know, throughout the interview process, we interviewed a lot of candidates for this position. It was a long process, but we do believe we have the exact right to candidate, to take over Maraski. His passion for education, his passion for kids, his excitement for this position is just overwhelming, and Mike, we're thrilled to have you. I don't know where your wife went, maybe the baby was...
The baby was crying.
Okay, okay. So Mike's, his wife Rachel was here with him, and he has a new baby girl, Emily, and Okay, okay. So, Mike's, he, his wife, Rachel, was here with him, and he has a new baby girl, Emily, and, uh, just thrilled to have you again. Did you want to say a few words, Mike?
Come on up.
Come on up, Mike.
It's been a while. We, we're always excited about our new hires, but you've created quite a buzz, let me tell you.
Well, I appreciate it.
I've heard a lot of things so far.
I will do everything in my power to live up to the, the expectations. Um, throughout the process, I was blown away by, uh, the interview team and, and the administrative team, uh, Mrs. Pelco and Dr. Raiba. Um, and I am absolutely blown away by your guys' commitment to students, to families, and to the community as a whole. Um, I am more than excited to be a part of the Strongsville family, um, to work towards your three goals of, of servicing student achievement, uh, financial prudence, and then, um, engaging with the community. And then ultimately, I, I'm gonna be here for kids each and every day. Um, Maraski is a family, and I, I can't wait to be a part of that family. So, thank you, guys, for this opportunity. Um, I, I look forward to developing model Mustangs moving forward. So, um, I, I am excited to be a part of, uh, the Strongsville community.
We're excited.
You're welcome.
We are a family. We're, we're sorry that your wife stepped out with your daughter. It was...
No problem.
We'd love to meet her, too, so...
You would. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
I have a friend, um, Chad Larmour, who's on the, um, the Nordonia School Board. Um, and he texted me two days ago and said, you know, "You, you just took one of our principals." And I said, "Yeah, well, that stinks for you." And he goes, "Yeah, but he's a good one." So, I'm really happy that you're here.
For twelve years, I've bled green and white, and I look forward, uh, to bleeding green and white for many more years.
There you go.
Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Continuing under E three, Appointments for Certificated Staff. Appointments, um, for, we have our Summer School two thousand nineteen, um, teachers and clerk. Appointments for Extended School Year, uh, staff. Appointments for cer- our certificated supplemental contracts, additional time, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts extended time. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts that are prorated. Appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts that are prorated. Uh, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Under E four, Changes in Hours for Non-Certified Certificated Staff. E five, Changes in Status for Certificated Staff. Changes in Status for Non-Certificated Staff. Under E six, Stipends for Our Certified Testing Consultants. Stipends for English Learner Summer Program. Stipends for Our Kindergarten Screening. Stipend for Our Resident Educator Coordinator. Stipends for Our Technology Coaches, and stipends for Our Teacher-Based Team Coaches. And finishing up, stipends for Our Webmasters for next year. Under E seven, Contract Recommendation for Non-Certificated Staff. Uh, E eight, Medical Leaves for Non-Certificated Staff. Under E nine, Unpaid Leave for Non-Certificated Staff. Under E ten, we have Volunteer Chaperones. Under E eleven, A Volunteer Coach. Under E twelve, we have our Spring two thousand nineteen Athletic Tournament for Baseball that can be found in Exhibit W. E thirteen, Security Services, um, contracted with the Strongsville City Police Department. Under E fourteen, Service Agreement for McKeon Education Group. Under E fifteen, Service Agreement for Our Spanish First Class Through Auxiliary Services that can be found in Exhibit Y. And I also have, uh, the addendum to, um, Section E three, Appointments for Certificated Staff and Appointments for Extended School Year Staff, um, for one of our Education Aides. And that concludes my report.
Whoa, are you sure?
I believe so.
Nice job.
I told you, we've been busy.
Yeah, you have been. I know.
And, uh, the last thing I have, uh, Mr. Neso and Board members, is under E ten, uh, Technology. We, we don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay.
Jenny? I'm sorry.
No, sure.
I, uh, just two quick questions. I wanted to, to make sure we're clear. A lot of the names on the extended school year contracts repeat. They're all separate. They're all separate contracts. We're not doubling up or anything?
I don't believe so, no.
This is, again, that's my assumption. I want to make sure that that's true, but, uh, the language gets tortured after a while.
You're talking about the names that are repeated?
Yes. So, we'll ha- you know, for, we'll have examples where someone will have an extended school year contract, and then they'll have extra days, et cetera. I want to be clear, those are all for separate activities and separate
Yes.
separate duties.
Yeah, extended school year is, um, has to do with our, our special education, um, students that require services throughout the summer. Um, and then when we have additional time and extended time, that goes throughout the school year for our teachers. So, yes, you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
And then I wanted to confirm that our volunteers, uh, there's still, uh, background checks and everything.
Correct.
as part of their process to be volunteers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, that gets us to, and there's nothing on technology, you said, correct?
No.
Okay. Uh, report on Polaris?
Thank you, Carl. I just wanted to highlight that the summer two thousand nineteen edition of the Polaris Compass, uh, came out last week, uh, so you should get it in your mailbox. Uh, you should already have it in your mailbox or getting it very soon. It's also available on the website. Um, just like we're very busy, uh, in the summer in the school district, Polaris is very busy right now. Uh, the, uh, construction project is in its last legs or the last swing. All of the classroom space is scheduled to be finished for the opening of, uh, the fall school year, and then the entire construction project is scheduled to be finished by October. Uh, so by October of two thousand nineteen, uh, it'll be a brand-new Polaris, uh, top to bottom, left to right, front to back. So, it's a very exciting time. Um, and then in the, uh, in the Compass Edition, there's some articles about, uh, some different adult education programs that the, that will be starting shortly. Um, so make sure to take a look at it and, uh, avail yourself of any of the resources.
Alright, legislation?
Um, Mike, a quick update on legislation. We are three days away from the deadline for the, uh, biennium budget. It needs to be, uh, signed by the governor by the, by midnight, uh, end of Sunday. Uh, June thirtieth is the deadline. There was some chatter back and forth that, uh, right now, the Senate and the House are in committee to rec- uh, reconcile the differences between both of their budgets. And at this point in time, there's some talk about a temporary budget for two to three weeks if they cannot resolve their differences. The House says, uh, we may need a temporary budget. The Senate says, "No, we're working very well together, and we will have something to the governor in time." Uh, from an education standpoint, uh, the comment I would bring up is that the Cup Patterson Report, um, they did in a, a press release or a press announcement earlier in the week, that they're continuing that effort to change the way Ohio funds education. But they recognize that they're not going to be able to do it as part of this biennium budget, but they want to keep the pressure and the mot- uh, the motivation and the momentum going. So, they're looking forward to, uh, doing something in the next year. Um, and accepting, accepting the budget as it is now or as it will be, and then, uh, working on that new, uh, way to fund education. Their plan is a six-year plan. So, they're looking at, uh, getting, uh, getting enough consensus to get it passed within the next two years, so that it'll be in place, and it will take six years to go completely in effect. Um, but, uh, keep your pressure on, uh, Mr. Patton and Mr. Dolan, and that concludes my report.
How many years are they gonna tell us they're working on the plan?
They've been telling us for how many years, so we shall see.
If I'm not mistaken, even the Senate version of the budget, we didn't gain anything to speak of.
We are cautiously holding our breath for a mulligan, but at this point in time, uh, I think the story is very similar as the past number of years.
Yep. Okay. Layzon Reports, uh, City Council, Jane or Duke?
Okay. Thank you, Carl. The, um, last city council meeting, they passed the ordinance, um, adopting this master plan for the city. So, if you're interested, it is on their website. They did amend it to, um, change a few dates and some typographical things, but overall, that is, um, the guidelines for, um, how they'd like to see the city, um, progress for the next ten, twenty years. So, it's interesting reading, and a lot of demographic information in there. They also, um, had a public meeting about the, uh, proposed zoning, um, Pearl Road for, um, the Fieldstone Group. And that, um, is going to be voted on at the meeting on Monday. So, if, um, you have any opinions about that, contact your council person. And the city is, um, busy, just like the school district, with all different kinds of maintenance and, um, street repairs and culvert repairs. So, you'll be seeing a lot of activity around the city this summer while they take care of, um, the areas of the city that need, um, attention, whether it's for flooding or, um, just crumbling roads. That ends the city council report.
Excellent. Education Foundation, um, I don't think they had, uh, I don't think they had...
I'll just, I'll just thank them for a second. They, um, just recently approved a grant from our counselors for a program, um, that helps measure kids' social, emotional well-being, um, for our elementary school. And, um, so we certainly appreciate their support because it's really gonna help us identify in a systematic way kids that need our assistance. So, I'll thank them for that.
PTA, there's...
Yep, PTA is out. They're all enjoying their families.
Student achievement, Sam?
No student achievement yet.
Alright. Board Meeting Committees, uh, Finance Committee meeting, we haven't had one since the last report out?
Yeah, we had one. When was it? Uh, about a month ago.
Did we report at the last meeting?
We reported the last meeting, the next, um, the end of the school year. The next one won't be till, uh, October.
Okay. Uh, Policy Committee meeting. I know you guys are excited. They were, we're on the second reading, teeing it up, getting ready, running in place?
The second reading is twice as exciting as the first reading.
They are, they are. It's excellent. Well, thank you for that. Um, Facilities Committee meeting, there was one just Thursday, night or Wednesday?
Last Thursday, yes.
Last Thursday?
I was not able to attend, unfortunately.
Alright. I know in the meeting they went through, they, they took a look at the appropriation, the, uh, the, the Maintenance Fund, the Appropriations Fund, whatever they would call that, the million dollars that, uh, that comes in. What's that?
We, I was, we reviewed, um, maintenance plan, and we also looked at, had discussion on the vacant properties as well.
Okay. Did we get to the, I know part of the agenda was to get through to the, talk about revisiting the thirty-year plan. Did, did they get to that in the...
We spoke, we spoke to, or it was spoken to, and, um, it was, the conclusion was that it, um, since the last time it was reviewed, no change to it.
Okay. Alright, excellent. Business Advisory Committee, we did not have a meeting. We're waiting to announce when the next meeting would be. That brings us to the consent calendar. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Alright, so in this...
We need to withdraw.
We, in this one, we have multiple changes, so I'd like to move, um, well, let's go through them. Ten A three, uh, we have to change that date from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty. Item ten C two, Title One Fund, uh, changed to General Fund. Ten E two, Terry Harbart's from June thirtieth to May thirty-first. And then item ten B, I'd like to request, because, uh, I abstain from that, I'd like to move that to a separate vote. And I'd like to do that separate vote now. Correct?
Um, we have the motion for the consent, so let's do the consent.
Okay.
And then come back to, uh, and that was item ten B two.
Item ten B two.
Ten B two.
Alright, so let's, uh, vote on all those, with those corrections.
And with the exception of ten B two.
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Okay. Item ten B two, which is the, uh, insurance, uh, through Todd. Can I have...
I'll take that.
You take that, sir.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Jane. Okay, any discussion?
No, but we're gonna re- make sure the list is complete of all of our...
Right. We're gonna add the addendum for the undeveloped properties.
Yep.
And Steve's gonna take care of that. So, any other discussion?
Steve, real quick, what was the source of the increase?
Uh, two items. We did, um, we did have some instances that where we had to use the coverage, uh, in the past year. They go back five years. So, when they did the quoting, they had to take into account some of the incidents that have happened within the past five years, and then there is just a normal cost of the, of insuring and a increase in the property, um, rates that also occurred in here. Our assets, uh, some of them are actually increasing in value as well, some of our properties. So, that, all of that combined together to increase the overall rate.
We went up, what, about four percent?
Correct.
Might be something to think about for the retreat is strategies to address that along with any of our other insurances.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Miko, one of the items I mean, Steve, been exploring, is exploring, uh, just like we joined a health consortium for, uh, medical insurance, we've also been exploring consortium groups for property liabilities such as, such as this, where, um, we'd pay into the consortium and also have the opportunity to get, the money would stay in the, uh, consortium and be itself insured to a point where if there's reserves, you could potentially get that back as well, and also, um, have better rates as, as, as long as, as well as, um, with the increased members into that consortium.
So, that was your softball pitch for the day?
Yep.
I thought we were gonna invite Doug and the Ebu to come be here and maybe see if we get a lower rate.
Okay.
Okay, George, I guess you...
Question?
Nope.
Okay, take a vote.
Uh, Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso abstained?
Abstained.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh. With one extension.
Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for handling that matter. That brings item sixteen, um, second reading on a number of, uh, policies, and, uh, that brings us to, do you have any comments on them? Nope? Okay. That brings us to item seventeen, Board of Education Other. Uh, do we have some others?
I have one. Um, Fourth of July is coming up in a few days here, so please be careful with fireworks and sparklers, because kids can get hurt very easily with those things. And also celebrate our independence, 'cause it's important.
Excellent. Um, I have one other. Um, I just wanna, uh, I sat in on a meeting with our, our new athletic director. Uh, how long is it gonna be we call you new athletic director, Mike? You're with our athletic director.
In the next five years, maybe.
Another month.
And, and some of this, some of the booster programs, the boosters and some of the other programs that support our kids in, in their athletic efforts, and the amount of money that's raised by the, all these organizations is just phenomenal. And, uh, we got together for a number of reasons. One, just to make sure everybody, uh, knew the rules, and everybody made sure that the money came in through the treasurer, and all the things were done properly, and, and so that, uh, Denny, uh, the A.D., would, would, they would follow his direction, that everything flows through his direction. And, uh, but the program, the, the boost, all the different groups that were there, the, we had the athletic boosters, the normal booster program, then we had the hockey boosters, the Strongsville SSO Soccer Organization, the baseball league, and the football backers, basketball, excuse me, and the football backers. And the money that these groups are raising is phenomenal. And what we did was, we talked a little bit about making sure that everybody kind of stayed in their lane. We don't want these groups, you know, there's, it's only, it, it's kind of the same parents, it's the same groups. We don't want to just keep going back and, and crossing paths. You know, so just like in the Ghostbusters, you don't want to cross those streams, 'cause bad things can happen. But, um, so we, we talked about that, just to make sure that other than we go through Denny and George, our treasurer, to make sure that it's all done proper, and we kind of limit the things that would overlap, and that we wouldn't have I, uh, events on the same weekends or the same thing. So, they're just to try to keep, keep things going, and, um, you know, it, it was a really good meeting, and it was exciting to see all the hard work that everybody puts in, um, through all those five organizations, and it was, it was really cool. So... At that, I don't have anything else?
Nope.
Nope? Alright. Meeting notice. Um, we have a Monday, uh, regular board meeting on Monday, July fifteenth, right here, and then we have our retreat on August sixth, uh, right here. Um, so those are the next two meetings. We have no need for executive session. That's thrilling. And, uh, with that, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
George, take roll? Uh, Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at eight twenty-nine P.O.